I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, August 5th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role?
That's member chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Omenella.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Mayor Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
He is on Old Denver, or he's in the parking lot by now. It depends on. He's on his way in.
And Councilmember Fiorito is absent with notice.
Okay. Uh, we have before us an agenda and oh, we'll start with the disclosures of conflicts of interest. Any disclosures of conflicts of interest, Mr. Cole?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've received no disclosures of conflicts for this meeting.
Excellent. Then we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And the agenda, the agenda.
And the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Mayor Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Omenella.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, uh, five to zero. Did, did any roads? Was there, they're flooding?
Uh, coming up Old Denver now.
Good.
That's it.
All right. First up, we have a presentation from Steve Murray on the draft 2025 budget. Mr. Murray.
Good evening. Let's let me get connected here.
Will you be doing it from down there or up here?
I can do it from either which would you?
As long as we can hear you.
I have the mic on.
No, but we have to hear you.
Yes, I will present loud.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council members. I'm Steve Murray, Senior Accountant, and will be presenting the 25 draft budget review. For our revenues, our some, uh, we are assuming 23 actuals flat, um, until we have more conclusive data for 24 actuals. Point five percent of sales tax collected goes to the two F, 50% of sales tax collected on Tribeview property is allocated to Tribeview per the IGA. Thirty-three percent of sales tax collected is allocated to the water fund and broken out further to the two-way fund. Or about or approximately 42% of sales tax collected is allocated to the general fund. In 2025, we are looking to split the PD and the two F fund to separate funds in the police department to join the general fund. Um, based on our, on our understanding of the 27, 2021 ordinance. Um, we will. The two F fund will be responsible for eight officers and one detective, including hiring and training of that employee. Maintenance and replacement of the police fleet, essential public safety equipment. And then prior to this change, the general fund has transferred $2.7 million to the police department annually. For expenses, the department is on a need-based approach, same as years prior. Um, the department allocated is based off operational duties and then assumptions, assumptions and changes due to or from the last town council meeting is we increased the CERSA premium to 20% as we expect higher increases. And then the police department has moved to the stepping grade as of resolution 42, 2024. For projects, um, this is the same slide that you saw last town council meeting. And the directors have worked to put together a new list of projects that you have in front of you. This is by department and by priority number, um, put together by Madeline. I can let her speak more on that if you have questions. As we look at our reserves, we have the $2 million for the ARPA. This needs to be allocated in 2024 to be spent in 2025. We continue with our legal expenses. We looking at 2025 at 440,000. This is the split per department. Then we have supplemental projects. These are wish list items and are not on the budget as they stand. Um, these are items that the directors are looking for your advice on what can be pushed and what should be pushed to prior or next year's, um, budget. And then as we look at our budget layout of all the funds slide by slide, um, or side by side, I'm sorry. This includes the PD being integrated with the general fund, um, and the two F being split out. As you can see, we have a $1.5 million deficit in the general fund. Um, but we have an extra of 1.9 million in the capital project fund. We are looking to allocate these expenses from the capital project fund to the general fund. Um, at the same time, this is similar to what you see with water and the $5 million there between water and the two-way water fund. Um, please note that these are draft numbers and a living document. Finance Directors, Madeline and Chief Patrick are meeting to reevaluate spending and revenue, um, gain in 2025. Thank you.
Hey, um. The, the 2025 budget lists, the project equipment, that's all supplemental, right?
These are, these are all items that are sort of above and beyond general operating expenses. So any big ticket operational expenses or equipment or project that we need um, has been added into this, but obviously we do need to prioritize and, and potentially move off some of these projects to a future year.
Okay, um. I, I don't, okay, so the, the first item on the list that council member pay, that's annual total?
Say that one more time, please.
The council member pay.
Oh, that's, that's an estimate. We don't really have those numbers yet. I just didn't want it to get forgotten to be put into the budget as an additional expense that we've not historically budgeted for.
Yeah, we discussed it. So they just put a placeholder on it.
Also remember for 2025, it, it would depend, it wouldn't apply to existing council members, only new council members.
Only those elected in 2024.
Correct.
Um. And then the comp plan. Um. This, this 450 is in the 2024 budget, is it not?
It is correct, but will, will likely not spend in 2024. It will be beginning to be spent in 2025. So we need to include it in the 2025 budget.
This, this is showing above and beyond. And the impact fee study. As first I'm seeing, that's going to be $100,000.
It, it'll actually be closer to $250,000. We're splitting it with water for the study, yes, based on consultants.
Reason to do it because by the time we get it done. Everything will have been impacted already.
Do we, do we really need to, to, to do that in depth of a study on that? Um, Mr. Cole had said something before that if we had kind of followed the guidelines of other places. Am I misunderstanding that, Mr. Cole?
Uh, yes, I think you are a little bit. We, we actually have to do a town-specific study. Uh, because the fees have to be based on the costs, uh, necessary to mitigate the impacts created on your service by the anticipated development in your town. So we, we can't just take someone else's study or someone else's fee and, and defend that.
Okay, so we could, so with that, we would do, we would do road impacts, we would do renewable water impacts, we would do park impacts. And we would do, um. Stormwater impacts. And there was one more. Um. I, I don't know if I said parks, there'd be park, park impact fees, or you just do a, you just do a park fee and and you don't need to do an impact study on that.
Um, so yeah, then, then there's two sets of, of costs there. One is general funding, the other one's coming from water. We're covering all the fees, all the fees, impact fees and costs that, um, potentially could be studied and then charged to new development and new subdivisions in town. Um, so we can obviously pri- um, prioritize which ones we want to look at and, and, uh, cut that cost down. Uh, but it's really the same service, same, uh, same set of consultants who are going to do a full study for us to justify, uh, impact fees moving forward.
How long would that take to do if we gave you the go-ahead?
So I, I don't know, a study like that, probably, I would say an average of nine months, probably reasonable given the time.
Yeah, I, I think, uh. Depending on which part of the studies they're doing for water, impact these studies probably going to take a little less time than some of the others. Cause there's water that are available.
And, and.
Maybe water would be.
And then, um. Does that, I mean, plans that are submitted, do they still, uh, get the impact fees or is this? Would this only be for property that is, hasn't been submitted on anything?
So, um, if I understand correctly, you're asking if vested rights protect, uh, current preliminary flats and preliminary PUDs from having to pay additional impact fees in the future. Uh, I think Bob would probably be able to judge, I'll get an answer to that, but I know taking a look at our, our development code, it's very specific on what, um, when a property owner has vested rights. Uh, and it's, and it's important, you know, if I'm interpreting the code properly, preliminary stage is not vested. So, um, but, but Bob, would you have any additional thoughts on that, share?
Yeah, I, I think that's right. The, the monument code really, um, uh, puts vested rights down the line quite a ways in the planning process. But it also requires some very specific actions. And since I've worked for the town, no development has sought or received vested rights. Um, so that, that's probably not going to come into play. What, what will come into play is, uh, the statutory guidelines for, uh, some of the impact fees. And whether, uh, those are applicable to the town as a homegrown municipality. And there's plenty of room to argue they're not. But, uh, if they are a couple of, a couple of keys there are, um, the fees would not be payable until building permit. And any project that has received a final approval, so a final plat, final PUD and the like. Uh, those would not be able to be subjected to impact fees. So, um. I, I think, I think there's plenty of work that's, uh, that's coming up in the town that would, would still be subject to impact fees. If, if, uh, we got a study and got them in place and, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Ungar Leiter. Uh, you know, my experience is six to nine months, uh, in order to select a contractor, get them in, get the study done, get them adopted. Uh, but I would still think it would be valuable, a very valuable tool for the town to, to get those in place.
Well, we, we definitely need the money for these impacts. I mean, there's no doubt about it. We're really far behind the curve right now. Um, okay.
Is, is there a way to get it done any faster?
Consultant produces it faster or after we change, we, we change our budget and, or approve a change in the budget process? Change your control budget. Uh, and then the second one is money. Uh, so we certainly go and ask the consultant, uh, you know, with a fast crack at 20 process.
Obviously, that's going to be an item, obviously, that I'm sensing from Mayor Pro Tem, uh, well, obviously all of us that needs to be addressed quickly and also has, uh, probably a very immediate impactful return, uh, of, of having it done as well.
Once the impacts or once the, the studies are done, how long are they valid for? Since you say they're going to take approximately nine months, how long after that, once completed, how long are they valid for?
It was the last time we did one.
Never, never.
The, uh. The, the law doesn't really specify statutory law, doesn't specify, nor does case law. What I have recommended for the last 15, 20 years is that, that clients update those studies at least every five years. Because again, that the, the study has to relate to the cost of providing services and the, and the, uh, impacts created by development. And so obviously those change over time. If you had, if you had a, a reason to believe that either of those two factors has changed significantly, you'd want to update more, more frequently, but I think every four to five years. If, if you, uh, select, uh, your contractor the first time and they work well for you and they do a good, good, uh, a good product. Um, and then you bring them back in to update the study. Then those updates, uh, from my experience have been, you know, much, uh, cost much less and they're accomplished much quicker. Sometimes there's reasons that you just need to change contractors and that doesn't follow through, but, uh, that's, that's more information than you asked for. But bottom line, I'd say every four to five years, unless you have something that significantly changes the, the costs or the impacts.
Well, I believe the road impact studies are from 2002.
Yeah.
Um, 2006 for sure, but I think it was done before that. And the last time we updated a storm drainage impact fee was 2017 and it was only because it matched the El Paso counties. So we, we haven't really done any of this.
So I think, uh, I think the council's saying we need, want you to find a $100,000 place in the budget.
Or isn't that, isn't there a surplus of that? What was that surplus of the? Oh.
Well, 100,000 is going to be split with the water department, right? So.
Right.
No, actually, the, the way it's drawn up, it's 100,000 coming from general, there's another 150 coming from water.
So it's actually two, 250? Yeah, I was.
Of course, as we go out to seek or consult, we're not going to go with the highest bidder, so we're going to try to bring down a reasonable cost. And we're expecting through initial conversations with, uh, two or three consultants, it's about $250.
Okay, so Steve, can you and your staff find the money? And.
Still print some.
And just, well, that's fine. If they, if he can print it, that's fine. Just make sure it's legal tender. Um, but get creative, discuss.
It's likely we wouldn't need the full 250 this year, so it could probably be split between both years. So we, we should be able to at least put it out for RFP and maybe get the project started in 2024.
Standing.
Yes, it would.
Especially since it's not been done in 145 years. So it's, it's time.
And just, and just to be clear, so we, we're, we're, we're listing, and I, there might be more than this, but, um, road impacts, renewable water impacts.
Hang on, Dan, this directed at you and Tom.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're covering all the.
Just want to make sure that, and then it might be more than this, but road impacts, renewable water impacts, stormwater impacts. And parks, if there is an impact fee or if it's just a park fee, um, you know, lots of municipalities have park fees.
My conversation with, uh, the consultant community is looking at everything.
Okay.
Uh, so we're hoping that we have, we have received recommendations for other impact fees, uh, things we should be considering including for.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, are there any other items on the budget that, um, I, I guess I have one question, just so I'm not confused. Uh, the police, the two F police department. It's a split of PD to general fund and two F. What are we doing? We're taking two F and putting it into the general fund?
No, I'll, I'll take it. Uh, we're doing just the opposite. Actually, we're taking two F and making it its own fund.
Okay.
So we'll get the entirety of the two F fund goes into one account, and I'm going to be able to show from that account that we spent it on exactly what we said we were going to spend it on.
What, you mean what the voters approved, you could spend?
Correct.
And then the general fund money is for everything else in the police department.
Right.
And is there a, in, a request above the 2.7?
Yes, there is.
Is it in this packet?
It's not in that packet. So this is just a, a basic overview of the budget, um, in total. And we'll get more granular as we go on, but, um, 2021, the general fund transfer to the police department was about 2.633. And it's only gone up to 2.7 over the last three years. Um, which hasn't been sustainable for the police department. So we're asking for about 3.7 this year.
Right. So for those that weren't here the previous years. Prior to two F, the police, once, once we made the request to lock in a number. Um. Prior administrations did not give them more money. So they, while other departments got more, the police department's number stayed the same. And we need to get them now caught back up with everybody else. Providing that we have the money.
Correct.
Right, okay. Any other questions about the, uh, budget items? Okay, let them fly.
Okay, so, um. You know, two of my huge concerns. I see in the two-way water, there's a loop project and loop NDS, but the loop NDS is emergency interconnect. I mean, but we've had other meetings and briefs over the loop system and the northern delivery system. Um, and which one that we were going to determine was going to be the best course of action for the town. Um, I, I just don't see how we can really come down. Well, this, another thing that I'll bring up is how, how do we really determine without knowing how much it's going to cost budget-wise and where that money is going to come from? To pay, to, uh, cover the west side of I-25, basically one-third of the town residents. Their water. I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at budget stuff, which is, which is awesome. But without having, I don't think without having those numbers, and I'll lead into a, a realistic number for what's needed cost-wise for Jackson Creek Parkway, because it says 9 million here, but yet I think realistically that could jump dramatically, like 13, up to 13 or 16 million.
It's already doubled. You think it's going to double again?
We, we should know for Jackson Creek Parkway in the next few weeks, once we have the design completed and then we can start putting it out to bid, we'll have more firm numbers.
Yeah, that, that was my question, because it wasn't, I thought that was already, that wasn't, that wasn't done yet, they.
No, no, that hasn't been completed yet. They're still working on the design. We just wanted to have rough draft number then for everything that we knew. So.
Okay.
Specifically with Jackson Creek Parkway, we, that's our best guesstimate right now, but we should know closer to September what that might look like.
Okay, and then back to the two, the loop and the NDS, what are, where do we stand with getting? When, when are those numbers going to come to the council? When is that brief actually going to take place and happen?
So I, I'll interject a little bit on the loop, because council member Chronic and I went to a meeting and they're pretty, they're getting pretty close on their numbers. Um, and they're also going forward with trying to figure out how to obtain right-of-way. And there's, there's a couple of different issues with CSU as to whether or not it's worth having them pre-treat or, um, use their facilities, um, or if we just go it alone. So, and Tom can interject on that, because he's more involved in that than I am, for sure.
Yes, uh, I think as of right now, there's an executive session scheduled for September 3rd. That's gonna bring you all up to date, the same presentation that, uh, Councilman King, Councilman, uh, Councilman Chronic went to about two weeks ago, it was like in here. I know too. Uh, but anyway, we're going to present that to the whole council, I believe, uh, on the September 3rd meeting. And then you'll, you'll get to see exactly where we're at, at this point, and the numbers are more updated, more current. And what that's going to look like. So we're at that point now, where all four members are briefing their, their government bodies as to everything they're going to talk about on September 3rd is specific to the town of Monument's cost. Okay, so, um, you'll have more information, we'll have a lot more information, I think, coming out of that, that session. If you got a better handle on what the actual costs are going to be.
And CSU just released, there was a newspaper article, I don't know if you saw that or not, where their, their, um, utility and water, uh, bills are projected to go up 45% in, I think it was the next 11 years?
Five.
Five years? Five years, 45%.
Sounds lovely.
Can I add one thing? Funny that you mentioned 45%. I got an email over the weekend, it's kind of anonymous, it's a fair who's from. And they said, uh, some anonymous source said Tom Mott is going to jack the water rates up 45%. And I'm like, I'm not, I didn't answer it yet, because they just wanted to make people aware, but, you know, we have, we have no plans for that. It's never been brought up. We all know how the water rates in this town, uh, we need to do a study to determine where they need to be, and then the council would have to approve that before we would ever go to the public.
Oh, and, and regardless of what's that's probably somebody read that article.
Well, the same people probably read the article that we're getting rid of the prairie dogs in Woodmore, too.
But, um. But regardless, if we hook up to the loop or if we hook up to NDS, I mean, the rates are going up no matter which system we hook up to, just to pay for the infrastructure that makes care of all that stuff. And again, with, with NDS, I don't know how much of that 45% increase from CSU gets passed on to, to NDS since they're a little bit different than just purchasing the water from them. I'm not exactly sure how that works out.
Okay. Um. Two other questions. One of them is tree replacement. What is tree replacement? Where is that? What, what trees are being replaced in?
So every year we lose some trees or we determine that we need to plant more trees in some areas. So it's just a specific line item that we put in our budget.
So it's on, is, so is it in town-owned property or is it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Okay, and then, uh, I guess the question is going back to that, this first item on this 2025 budget, this pay. Is this being, is this being sidebarred and talked about or? I, I.
It was discussed.
It was discussed at another, it was discussed at a previous amount, but it wasn't determined.
Right, we haven't gone, we haven't, we still need to talk about it. I don't think it's, uh, it's, is it a discussed item tonight?
No. No, there was, no, and, and it's not like it has to be done immediately. I mean, for purposes of budget. Yeah, but this is for 2024 dollars, correct?
2025.
Okay, fine. Then, um, times 10, I'm kidding. But yeah, I mean, we need to discuss it, but it's not imminent.
Yeah, I, I would, obviously, I would like to discuss it. Again, you all know my stance, I'm against it, but, because I, I just. I'd rather that become, put on the ballot for the residents of Monument to deter, to decide, not this council deciding that we should get paid.
We're not, that, that's not it.
It's not this council deciding if we shall get paid, it's this, this council deciding if. It's not this council deciding if we shall get paid, it's this, this council deciding if.
No, the future councils, you're, you're absolutely right. I, I forgive me for what I said, but yes, for the future council, I don't think that's, I don't think we should determine that. I think that should, that should be the residents on a ballot. Regardless of what legal says or anything, there's something about integrity about that just. I'd rather see it on a ballot than, that, so I, I would ask that have the discussion later on about that or put on for discussion to have that done.
Um, other budget items, anything else on the budget you want to review?
HR ADA transition plan.
Yeah, so it's something that we should have had like in the nineties when the ADA law was passed, we should always have a transition plan. And Mr. Cole can, can clarify anything that I might have wrong, but it's something that we should have in place and then that we can be addressing. So we should, that way we can show residents that we are working towards ADA compliance. Um, so since we don't have that currently, this is, this is the kind of the worst case scenario for creating one of these plans. Where we look at all of our ADA infrastructure within the town and determine what needs to be completed or fixed or upgraded.
Do you know, does that apply to, um, sorry, like new builds, would we require that they have like a certain?
Well, that's already required by the building code. This is like looking at our sidewalks and
oh.
infrastructure around town, our parks, things like that.
Okay.
Especially in places like parks where we haven't really done a lot of updating.
Okay, thank you.
The building code doesn't really address ADA either. It's a federal government law, so.
Correct, yeah, but it's, it's, it would, this transition plan would only affect town-owned infrastructure.
Got it.
Okay, my question on the same subject would be, um, has, does this take into account the possibility that some of those rules and regulations may change? Is that what this is part of too?
That's my understanding, yes, is that they're up to date with the current ADA rules and regulations and they, they basically teach us how to be checking for these things constantly, as well as create the plan, prioritization and future budget items in order to address any issues that we may have. Again, I think this number is high. I think it's kind of the worst case scenario and it could be phased as well, based on my conversations with consultants.
So then, what is that different from under facilities, the chamber ADA sidewalks?
So we know that there are sidewalks at one of our town-owned parcels that need to be updated at some point to be wider to meet ADA requirements. And so that's just a budget item that we know. So the ADA transition plan would help us know all of the projects that we need to do. And then be able to prioritize and then budget, obviously, we're not going to be able to meet all the needs. So that helps us then prioritize and then budget for future needs.
And is that the ADA transition plan? Is that a document like the comp plan and its formality?
It, it, it depends on what consultant we go with, but it's, it's a, it's a plan of some sort. It could be, um, it could be an app from what some consultants use, but it's basically a prioritized list of things that need to be addressed or continuously checked or things like that.
So, or we're in the subject of ADA sidewalks. I, I don't, I guess.
Can we stick to the budget?
Yeah, but it, but it's going to be, it's going to kind of affect that a little bit. But I just want to bring it up, it'd be simple. The projects that we have going on here, um, it, it doesn't seem like there's any sidewalks that are required in front of subdivisions necessarily. Some put them in and some don't, but, but there's still an ADA requirement. Uh, I mean, Laker, the Rockies comes to mind. There's a path that runs in front of that place. Um, all the stuff on synthese, there's no requirements for sidewalks along there. Um, shouldn't that be part of this as well, since that's ADA required? Shouldn't that be part of the development code?
That I would have to ask planning to see if they know a specific answer about.
Because in, in Denver, if you, if you built a house in the middle of a block with no sidewalks, you put a five-foot wide sidewalk in front of your property, even if it's fifty feet wide.
We're assuming, or we're not sure whose, whose cost that is. Um, for missing sidewalks, uh, I'm still learning, uh, the monument Colorado method of putting in sidewalks. I might have identified some gaps in places too, or wondering why it wasn't a sidewalk, but, um, I know some of the subdivisions on the east side sidewalk is actually on private property, not a public property. Um, and then there are other cases where it's in public spaces. So I, I think it's just going to require a full analysis. And then we're going to pri- prioritize supporting it, but.
To go into our budget if it's a development-related issue.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, but the developer still needs to be around.
Well, yeah, of course. Okay, thank you.
Uh, back to the chamber ADA sidewalks. Wouldn't that be part of the whole downtown?
The, this particular part of the sidewalk is more in their parking lot. It's more parking lot facing versus the downtown sidewalks. That is a whole nother project that, that does need to be done, but that had a much larger price tag on it. And it's possible this project might be moved into, um, well, A, it's, we don't need to address it next year necessarily, but it could also be moved into our capital improvements projects. Um, covered by our concrete and curb and gutter program. So it, it's just there to, to remind us that it's a project on our list, but it, it might move.
There, okay, um. So this is, under parks, it says UTV gator for twelve thousand dollars. But then on the police department wish list, it says UTV for thirty thousand dollars.
I know that with, with the parks gator, we, we might have different needs for our gator. They might be a much more pared-down gator. This is what I was getting from our park superintendent. Um, for PD's needs, they might need full enclosure, you know, just depending on the needs, the, the prices of them could be different.
That's, I'm just saying, that's a significant, that's an eighteen thousand dollar difference. That's a lot of upgrades.
Well, the police probably have to lock people up in it.
And then, um, so I just wanted trust but verify, like what is actually the cost? And then number two is the fencing around the police department parking lot, is that just in this area right here on, on the, uh,
Yes.
east side of the building?
Where the patrol vehicles are and where our jail is.
Okay.
Sorry, our holding cells.
This, the, this, you're, you're looking at the, the white, the white, or you're, you're in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were on this. Okay. I was like, where are you getting this from? Okay, any other budget? This is just still, we're in the early stages. Um, did we bring up the win? The Montrose win? Has that been discussed yet in public?
It, it has not.
Okay, can I?
You may, yes.
I would like to make sure everybody knows because it's on this list under the veragey, the facilities, energy savings project, solar HVAC, LED lighting, et cetera, right? Madeline went to Montrose and gave a five-minute speech. I watched it. I was there to support. I didn't go to Montrose. And Dola has granted us how much?
A five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand dollars to go towards our veragey project that, that will be helping with the green energy cost, uh, replacement equipment, so. So congratulations on that.
Nice job, Madeline.
Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move on then. Thank you for the, um, budget presentation. I, I highly suggest that as questions come up. We send them to Madeline slash Patrick to get to finance so that they could be responded back to all of us as we go through this over the next few months.
My question is, are we also passing the lectures to give recommendations on what?
They did give recommendations, that's what.
Priorities in order?
Well, they, they're, this is, I, I'm assuming this is the priorities and this is the, the wish list.
This list is just a little bit more in, in detail than we were able to provide in the, in the spreadsheet. So this is more of a comprehensive list, but these, these are, we are looking at these as a team to see what might be able to be moved um, into a, a future year or reduced pricing on, you know, splitting it between different years or things like that too. So it's a work in progress, but if you have feedback, we welcome it.
Okay. Well, um. Excellent. Thank you very much for the first go. Lodging taxes later, right? Yeah, okay, discussion item. I'll put that at the bottom. We'll move on to ordinance. We have one ordinance, public hearing, uh, ordinance fifteen twenty-two-four. Um, this is Mr. Cole. Would you like to walk us through that one, Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. Uh, so this is, uh, ordinance coming back before you from your July meeting. Uh, it's been updated a little bit. Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to call the, um, twenty-twenty-four regular town of monument municipal election. It, um, sets forth, um, the, uh, offices, uh, which will be elected at that election. Uh, and then the offices that'll be elected in two years, in twenty-six. It, uh, designates your town clerk as the designated election official and authorizes her to take all actions necessary to conduct the election. Uh, in terms of the, um, offices to be elected this fall. Uh, there would be four, this is in section two of the ordinance. Town would be electing one council member from district one to a four-year term. One council member from district two to a four-year term. One council member from district two to a two-year term, and then one council member at-large to a four-year term. In, um.
There is not, that's not at-large. It's not at-large.
Mr. Cole, this is the second time that we've brought this up. I'm not sure how the language at-large gets put into this. The, uh, this is the first time the districts are getting elected, which by default would leave two members at-large at the council. So how are you going to place one of the people that are sitting here today on a four-year term into a a districted position, which would be district one?
I, I got, it should be two, two four-year terms from one from district one, one from district two, two, two-year terms from one from district one and one from district two, and then the two existing at-large positions would rotate on the next election for a two-year and a four-year. That's the way that I believe it's supposed to be because we have two current at-large positions here.
Well, there's, uh, a, a, all of your positions right now are at-large.
Right, but. Right, but, but Sena and myself are those two at-large positions.
Well, no, every, every council member is at-large. And, and the objective with this, this election is to, um, afford every existing council member an opportunity to run for reelection. That's one of the goals of redistricting. It's not the highest priority, but it is a goal. And and so in order to do that, I believe this is the schedule that we need to, to follow.
Well, let me, let me get back into that again, because because Sena and I are both on four-year terms. Everybody else on here with the exception, exception of, uh, the mayor half are either their terms expiring or they, well, they were, or they were appointed and their terms are expiring. Um, so everybody else besides uh, Sena and myself are expiring this election cycle. So that would leave the two, that would by default leave us at, as the two at-large positions. Does that make sense?
So if you were to
Yeah.
do it based on section two, you would have one person up on the, who, who has a four-year term that was elected two years ago. You would have to move them into district one. How would you be able to determine? I, I mean, the voters didn't vote for them to be in a district. So you couldn't put them in one without the voter's approval.
Well, we're not we're really not putting anyone into a, a district.
But there's two current at-large positions that are going to be past this election.
Well, I guess, I guess that's where the, the the, um, difference in in, uh, our views are, um, everyone was elected or appointed uh, to their last seat. In essence, at-large, no one was, was appointed or elected to a specific district.
Right, but I'll go in, I'll go in order, so, um, Ms. Chronic was appointed, so by default she has a two-year term because it comes up on the next election cycle. Mr. Romanello, his term is expiring.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Kimple has a two-year term from the last election. And then Mr. Fiorito was appointed and has a two-year term. And, and Sena and myself both received four-year terms. So that would make us the default at-large positions. And then the next election cycle, then there would be a four-year and a two-year term for the at-large positions.
Yeah, and I guess I disagree that it, it automatically makes you the default at-large positions.
But we have four-year terms, so what would we, what would we end up doing?
You would, you would continue then, as the charter contemplates, you would continue to serve out your existing term until it expires.
So you'd have three at-large positions in essence.
Um, you would have, you would have two at-large positions under your charter and one, uh, uh, I, I, let me rephrase that. You would have one at-large position under your charter and you would have two council members who remain in office elected under your statutory form of government.
So in, in essence, though, it would be three at-large positions and one, one from a district and two from another district.
That's, that's correct. And
I have to say that I'm
Through the
Why we would do that?
Yeah, through this, through this schedule, you only end up having one election for a two-year term. I think, I think if we if we were to change it, you're going to end up with, with two. Um, and really why, because this is really complicated and you do have some leeway, frankly. Um, I, I would suggest that council appoint two members to sit down and, and work with me and the town clerk. And we can, I, I can explain why, put it together this way. This time, and, and if you want to look at other options, we still have one more meeting at which, uh, you can consider this, um.
Can I either just, Bob or Mr. Cole, I'm sorry, but nomination petitions are to be picked up tomorrow. Like, we need to have this decided tonight.
Okay.
Nomination petition timeframe starts eight AM tomorrow morning.
That's right. So I prefer personally that we have the districts, since they're newly formed, one four-year term, one two-year term from each district. The two at-large positions which Sena and myself would be as by default the next election cycle. One goes to a four-year term and one goes to a two-year term, just the same thing as what is happening with the districts right now. It just seems like that's a cleaner way to do it. And we can have both districts being represented.
Yeah, I, I may have misunderstood. I thought I thought, uh, that's what we presented in July and, and that was not desired.
No, and it was just, it was just wrong. No, and it was just, it was just wrong in July.
July, it was not that either, um.
But in July wasn't it?
That's.
Sure.
I'm not connected to the meeting, but I can send it to Will and he can graph it basically.
That'd be great.
This is actually a much, much cleaner plan than the one previously. And it also doesn't prohibit anybody who's going to be elected in November of twenty twenty-six. What you can choose to run for the district you currently qualified for, which is based on where you live. Or you can choose to run at-large.
Right, but I don't wanna end up with three at-large positions and one from one district and two from another district.
I, I disagree, and I'd like just, I'd like to show you graphically what it looks like. It's the plan that Bob put together. When he realized at the last meeting that the last plan. Didn't work out the way that he anticipated, so I'll turn this over and maybe we can browse and show it.
So one thing we talked about at the last one was. When a candidate is running, that they. Don't necessarily have to select whether it was a four or a two-year. That depends on the amount of votes they receive.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
That's right, and that was.
The lower votes get two and the higher votes get four. Until it's back in sync again, and then it doesn't matter.
A- and, and that was changed and, and that is reflected, uh, well, it wasn't changed, uh, because that was the way it was written in July, but, um. That, that is also, uh. The way this is. This is written in section two, the last paragraph of section two. Notes that. That's also the way, uh, the municipal code. Uh, calls for these seats when there's been a resignation and the like, uh. As, as does the, uh, Municipal Election Code thirty-one, ten, twelve, oh, five. So. That is what, what you're calling out is how this ordinance reads.
You want to go?
Yes, that excels by all use, you know? Yeah, let me, I'm bringing it up. While you're speaking.
Yeah, wh- while you're doing that, I'm looking back at the July, uh, fifteen. Draft ordinance, and we had. Um, one four-year term to be elected in District One, one two-year term in District One, one four-year term in District Two, one two-year term in District Two, and then in. Twenty-six, the mayor. Uh, a District One four-year term, a District Two four-year term. An at-large four-year term and an at-large two-year term. And I. I thought what that did. Is it set up the potential for three existing council members to have to run for two seats this fall.
Right, it does do that.
Yep, and that's okay.
It, it is one of the goals of redistricting to try to avoid that, uh, but.
But, but everybody's term, everybody's term is up, though. There.
That's true.
What is currently. Where you are placed, because we currently, or in November of twenty twenty-two, didn't have districts to place you in. What matters is. That the length of the term is accurate and that it. In, uh, this coming November of twenty twenty-four. You elect one person from District One, one person from District Two, one person at-large. Bob is the one who determined that. The shortened term would come from District Two. For some reason, I, he would have to articulate that to you better, and then in the following subsequent election, then you're on the same schedule. The, and then the mayor is in, on that one, but another full term for District One. Another full term for District Two and another, another full term for an at-large seat. And. You know, you would have to. If you're currently seated and you wanted to run again in November twenty twenty-six. You can only run to the district that you qualify for, or you can choose to run at-large. And that's a new office. Doesn't, your old office. You know, that term has coming on and you have to look. Forward to the next election.
Yeah, I understand that. It just, to me, it just seems like it would be better to fill the districts. Cuz, cuz the at-large is already at, filled. But, but this first election will have, it will be lopsided.
But District One.
In, in the original plan. Saying that District Two gets, for some reason, another shortened term. And that's when. I was told that there was a different plan that Bob had formulated, and that's what was presented at the previous. Council meeting and. And, and there were some issues with that, so this is, and we, we've had to change the nomination petitions now. Several times based on, we have to anticipate. What's gonna happen, and now we have nomination petitions out. For the most recent plan that was given to us, but to me, honestly, it made more sense. What I had factored in back in March, uh, which is. A District One full-term, District Two full-term, at-large full-term. And then the shortened term coming from at-large, um, which casts a wider net and does not give any. Any weight to one district or the other. It's the most even and cleanest, simplest way to accomplish.
So is the nomination petition, you have to pick if you're gonna be running for a district or at-large?
You have to pick either District One, District Two, or at-large, correct? Based on what you qualify for, uh, at the District One or District Two, it don't matter. You have to live in those districts. And if you would choose to run at-large, then you pick up that nomination petition.
Okay, so. It's been decided that District One, even though there's technically. Should be two people seated. We're only gonna see one.
Oh, the, I ba- I based this on. The ordinance that Mr. Cole wrote and, and put in this packet, so that's what this graphically represents. To me, personally, it makes more sense. To have that shortened term, which is the second green line. Not have that one, have it be an, another at-large position, so. I would flip-flop Abbott and Fiorito's. Names there and have that shortened position come from whoever gets the second highest votes. Oh, from, from the at-large. Uh, pool of nomination petitions, because it doesn't favor one district or the other. I was simply putting together. This based on the ordinance that, uh, presented to us in this packet.
And, and, and not to beat a dead horse, but it doesn't favor. It doesn't favor either district. If you ran two seats in each district now. It's the at-large position that goofs it up. As far as I'm concerned.
That also creates. At the next election, uh, another shortened term. This gets along the track quicker and, in my opinion, clearer. You, it doesn't prohibit anybody. It doesn't shorten anybody's term, it doesn't lengthen anybody's term, it doesn't prohibit them from running from the district that they are qualified in, nor does it prohibit them from running. For an athletic position.
It sets up the stagger nicely.
All right.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, Mr. King's done a, a good job kind of. Explaining the benefits of. Of the terms as they were presented in July, uh, and then. A- as they're being presented tonight, the advantages with this schedule are, are that. It has the least number of two-year terms going forward. Only one versus three. And, uh, again, it does not set up among seated council members a situation where. Uh, two or more council members have to compete for. For, you know, less than that number of seats. Uh. It, I think you have the flexibility to. Decide which way you want it, um, and, and, you know, knowing. Knowing the advantages and the disadvantages, you know, I don't really have much more to add.
Well, it seems like time is of the essence, so.
All right, well, this is a public hearing item, so. Um. We will open up. This item for the public to discuss. Is there anybody here in public that would like to speak? For or against this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we will move online. To see if we have anybody online that would like to speak about this ordinance for or against.
I see no hands raised there.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back to. Okay.
Up here. Mr. LeVere, your mic is muted. You need to mute, unmute on your side.
Good evening, Ryan LeVere, fifteen Washington Street. Um, I'll just go ahead and say this is not a hard decision or a hard discussion. Uh, I think, uh. Mayor Protem Steve King has got. This problem pretty much figured out. This is not something that needs a whole lot of extra thought. Uh, we've. Elected our town council members based on their ability to serve, and. If, if that's the way we need to go, let's, let's go ahead and just. Get something on the record, get something put in front of the voters, because. We, we know who's, who's up there. We know who's serving, um, and we've all voted. On their judgment. So to that end, I'd say that, you know, the Steve and, uh, Steve Kings and, uh, Councilwoman Abbott's. Positions need to be the at-large positions, and we need to elect our council, uh, our, our district members, uh. To that end. That's all I've gotta say.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is there anybody else with their hand up? Will?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll bring. Bring this item back for further discussion or a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance calling. The November fifth twenty twenty-four town regular election to be conducted as a coordinated election. Appointing the town clerk as the designated election officials, official and authorizing the town clerk. To enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Al Paso County Clerk and Recorder. For conducting the election and designated town council offices subject to the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six regular town elections.
Say it.
Got a motion in a second. Did, hang on a second. Did, was there some? Is there another question?
Yeah, I mean, we're. You made a motion to vote on this ordinance, but did we? Did we determine, are we going with?
We're going with the way it was written.
Written, we're not, so we're not taken into, or we're going into with Ms. Hogan.
Ms. Hogan.
Explain.
Her chart matched the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wanna double check cuz I was hearing something and then, okay.
Okay. Mr. Erickson.
Mayor Protem King.
Um. Only because time is of the essence. I don't agree with this. I don't agree with this schedule, the way that this is set up. My understanding was, as I explained earlier. That, uh. To me, it seemed like the district should be taken care of. Um, first. And then the at-large positions would. Get modified in the next election. Um, along with the mayor, but. Um, we have literally no time left to do this, and we need to get it on the ballot, so I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes. Motion passes. Six, zero. Okay, next up, resolution, uh, twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Final plat for Monument Lake Beachfront. Mister. Underlighter.
Back.
The beach is back.
Good evening. Um, so, uh. This, uh, period bit, this plat was presented to you, uh, earlier, uh, this summer. And, uh, your folks and we've noticed, uh, some. Uh, some errors on the plats, on the plat that is presented. Uh, we took the plat back. I worked with our consultant and our attorney. Uh, to clean up the plat. I think if you look at the last few pages of my memo, you'll see what was originally platted out there. And the new plat of, uh, the plats consolidating is many of the parts into two parcels. Uh, it's a much cleaner, um. A more productive, uh, plat, uh, that could be used then for us to, to, to begin doing improvements out at Monument Beach. Uh, uh, on the Lake Beachfront. Um, there has been a question about why we may, we, we instead of just consolidating all the one parcel, we left it as two. Uh, and that, that, uh, reason we left a, uh, it is two parcels because we didn't want to vacate right away. Um, uh, and we're concerned that we might have to, as we've vacated, we might have to give a portion of that right away. To the adjoining neighbors, uh, so we're maintaining as a single parcel, um, that is dedicated to public access, public use, and to the light of the light beachfront. So it's a very clean document. Um, we didn't have to go through this public process, which is, it's administrative, we're, uh, transparency sake. Um, and we're providing a better product that can solve our problems. So I ask you to. Make, uh, make a motion to approve it.
Is there a presentation for this?
Um, I wasn't planning on doing a full presentation. I could certainly put the plat up on the screen, um, to show. Thank you very much. Thanks, Will.
So I bring it up is cuz it's a public hearing item?
Uh, it's a continuation. Um, I can certainly go through everything again, and it's been presented to you multiple times, we've gone in front of the blind commission multiple times, so. Glad to answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay, anybody from the council with any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna understand the process a little bit more. I, I did speak with Mr. Underlinger, uh, earlier today about this, but. Um. From, from a legal perspective. Mr. Cole, the, the, the forty, so this is a piece of property that's owned by the Town of Monument, which is a public municipality. And there is a, a road that goes through here, yet we still have an access easement granted. On this road. Um. It. Excuse me if I, if I'm misunderstanding how this is all done, but it seems to me like it would have been just. At, be one lot and there wouldn't be any access easements granted and, um, there would be no track day. It would just be one parcel with a public road that has public access. Am I missing something with this?
Um.
And I don't wanna send this back. I'm just curious as to. Why we're, why we're, we still show an access easement?
Figuratively and literally scratching my head for a minute here, uh, and maybe Mr. Unger Lighter can help me with. Why we decided to go this way, um.
Um. But I'll, I'll try, um, um, the, uh, again, I, this was, uh, and this was pretty messed. The, the, the original plat, I mean, if you look at it, uh, it says the second, the last page in the, in the memo. Was very messy. There are lots of bits and pieces. There are easements that were dedicated to other parties. Um, we would have to, uh, scope, spend a lot of time and resources going to those other parties to get them to sign up, vacating their easement rights. Um, so we took the, um, we took the best path forward to, to clean up the plat and eliminate as much of the, the debris as possible. Um, I'm not sure I could really explain it further than that, and I, I just think we, we've got a useful plat, sort of, a useful plat now. Uh, that will allow us to, uh, better use that property. Really, that's all I have to, okay. Really, that's all I have to, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, I can, uh, I know we looked at also the, the issue of that that road was dedicated originally, so, uh, it kind of comes into play a little bit with the, uh, with honoring the, the purposes for which the road was originally dedicated. But without kind of diving back into it, I, I don't think I can give you a better answer than Mr. King.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is we own the property, correct? The town of Monument owns this?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and we're maintaining public use and access of, uh, on that property so we can use it to build washroom facilities and access to Monument Lake Beachfront.
Okay.
Any other questions? Public hearing item. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak for or this final plat for the beachfront? Okay, seeing none. Anybody online, Will?
See none online, Mayor.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or motions.
I'm going to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four, resolution approving a final plat for Monument Lake Beachfront filing number one.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Erickson? Mr. Kimpel, do? Amen.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic? Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes six to zero. Next up, resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Resolution to determine the vendors supporting our technology upgrades to council chambers. Mister Williams.
Mayor, councilmembers, hey, I appreciate your time this evening. Uh, I'm really excited, uh, back, uh, in, uh, late spring, we had, uh, did an RFP and we brought this resolution, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-four up to you at that time. At that point, there was a, a question about, uh, the, uh, the meeting agenda software that there was a decision made at that time to, to, uh, uh, hold off on a decision there and we went out or knew our RFP and removed the, the software portion of that RFP. Uh, five committee member reviewed the proposals. We had, uh, seven vendors submitted. We had them come here and look at what we had. We reviewed those and we went over six criteria, if you see in the memo, from service operating to pricing. And then we also had, uh, eight additional, uh, items that we looked at, uh, that the mayor and, uh, councilmember Chronic had brought up right when I first started, uh, just, uh, just under a year ago. Um, we discussed this to make sure that we were following the criteria. We took a look at it, we reviewed and decided, um, at that point that, uh, um, the proposal that came from, uh, Smart Systems Option One was the, the best that would provide us and met the criteria that was laid out and that we reviewed. And then, uh, additionally, at that point, um, I do have some, uh, additional upgrades that I'm doing um, infrastructure-wise, that I had funds for that's apart from the, the RFP that will provide, um, an overall better connectivity, a ten gig connectivity that will align with what the proposal that was put out by Smart Systems. So I'm asking tonight, uh, if you take a look at the, uh, the proposal that was submitted by Smart System was just under a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars with an eighteen-hundred, uh, annual recurring silver performance plan that will make sure that it assists us with, uh, if we have problems, that they will assist us with any type of, uh, fixes to that. Uh, with that being said, um, I'd like, uh, um, for you to, uh, devise some direction and approval that we can proceed on with Smart Systems Option One to, uh, to get this up to, uh, up to standards and give us a better, better overall experience for our constituents.
Well, um, back in the question, back in that um, presentation by all the vendors, Smart Systems was what number in that, were they?
They were the second ones that came on. If you recall, they were the ones that had the, they had brought, uh, some Telavik, um, displays that showed, uh, the council members or, in fact, it doesn't have to only be council, it can be used for, uh, planning commission and any other future commissions. They had Telavik, um, as an example, if you recall, they were the second ones that came in. Um, their, their first option actually is a less expensive and just as, uh, um, just as a pleasing uh, solution for, uh, the, the displays that they have. That's not Telavik because that was one of the things we stepped away and Telavik was a little too expensive and too cumbersome and it didn't have the agenda meeting software.
Were they?
We needed.
Were they the only ones that were also prepared to talk about holding meetings remotely?
Yes.
All the other ones?
Yeah, all proposals had, uh, in the RFP, we requested that we have an off-site um, solution if we could not, uh, perform council meetings here. Um, all of them did and they, they were as, as, as long as, and also the other vendors did provide proposals. Um, uh, Smart Systems provided, uh, a really smart and unique, uh, unique systems for their remote where it's kind of in a rolling case where I can pop up the monitors and we could actually use those to have, um, we could use that not just only for council meetings, but we could actually also use that for if we wanted to have an off-site meeting or a meeting in here where we didn't want to use the full resources, um, that it provides that flexibility.
And to refresh the memory of the council and the, the community.
Yes.
About, about those presentations, um, where they, where's their home office located at and what kind of uh, contracts or, or, um, businesses do they provide to?
Yeah, so they, they are out of Lakewood, Colorado, and they provided, uh, several, um, um, several, uh, uh, resources uh, of companies that they provided, um, um, similar conferencing systems to. Um, there wasn't ones that were specifically municipalities, but there were ones that were equivalent to what, what we wanted as a solution. Um, so, and that was one of the areas that we, when we looked and reviewed was, uh, we looked at their, um, um, looked at their references to see if they had, uh, uh, valid references.
Yeah, I just remember like some of them were like, one of the vendors said that they service like USAF, uh, others service like the
Yes, they, they.
Councils either down in, down in Springs or up in, up in the Denver metro area.
Yes, and they have done business for the Air Force Academy also.
This one did.
Yeah, I just.
This one's a veteran owned, small business.
Is this the one that was also interactive with Civic Plus or?
Uh, it, it, when we asked the question, because that was one of the things that we, we have, uh, gone to the Civic Plus, uh, live meeting software and it, it's, it's compatible and it is, is usable with that. Because Civic Plus is a web-based, really any of them would have been, um, had the ability to interact with it. Um, but the, their solution, I, I think what really took me over the edge when, when I reviewed it was the flexibility of the remote system and to be able to use it um, as an added resource that we don't have right now too. So it's not going to sit in a closet being paid for or not used. We could actually use it as, we could use it, um, as an additional resource.
And with the potential upgrades that we're talking about for, uh, this is Eric, Erickson, and the software changes, they're compatible with all these?
Yes.
Yeah, there'll be a reconfigure at the DAIS with, um, sort of like an all-in-one, but not necessarily, but everything will be on a different monitor with, is touch monitor?
Yeah, there, that wasn't part of the RFP because I, I actually, um, wanted to be doing, doing that myself. Uh, similar sized monitors with a touchscreen, a small micro PC where you can either use a small keyboard or you can use the touchscreen interface when the live, the Civic Plus live meeting comes up for voting. You would be touching that screen or using the keyboard, what your preference was. And then that, that would go to the town clerk for review and generating the totals where that would come up on the screen. So it's going to provide a, a really good, uh, a more visual for not only people here, um, but, uh, the, the, uh, people who are dialing into the meeting, it's going to give them a more visual, uh, a, a visual view of, of how the voting's done.
Okay.
Apple VR headsets?
Yeah.
Or minority report. Okay, so, um, this is not a public hearing. I'm just a regular resolution to, uh, my question is, uh, will this be completed before the end of this fiscal year?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and, um, we'll have to make sure we do all of our mock testing before they start tearing up carpet and we're going to have to still determine where we're going to be hosting meetings if they are in here, making it so that it's not habitable.
Yes, uh, if, if, if you do approve, we go forward with Smart Systems. I'll be working with them to, uh, look at getting the remote system up and running first. We'll, we'll do that and once we determine what remote location or locations that we're going to be using while they're doing improvements, uh, but, uh, my expectations is, um, we have the reality of this could all be up and running, um, at the beginning of the first or the fourth quarter. Um, or at least testing to where we can be fully implemented by middle of the fourth quarter.
Is it also, what about the, uh, how's that going to affect the upcoming election? Did they not use this room for? Has it been changed? Are they going to use the room down the street again? The building down the street? Okay, double checking.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, uh, if there's no questions, then I will look for a motion.
I make a motion, um, to approve resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution to determine the vendor supporting technology and audiovisual upgrades to the town council chambers of, uh, Smart Systems.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Next up, resolution forty, twenty twenty-four, resolution authorizing acting pay for co-acting town managers, um. So, Mr. Cole, it has been brought to my attention that, um, the employee manual has a predetermined percentage, uh, that would be different from an actual physical dollar amount. Right? Correct? And that percentage is five percent. I think we would need to make a modification if, for that section two. And, uh, I would recommend that we change it from five to ten percent. The council overrides the employee manual for this particular percentage. This wasn't anything we had a chance in reviewing to begin with, this, this personnel manual, so I think in this particular case, given the conditions in which we asked you to take on this role, that we bump it up to ten percent. No, no comments?
I'm not sure exactly.
We're in agreement.
I, I, I think I, I think I understand what you're doing. You want to override the employee manual from five percent, five percent and just give a ten percent bump.
Over their existing pay?
Over their existing pay. I, not that I'm against it, but I want to be the, be the one that's going to ask the question. Is that, is that legal to override the employee manual or to make that adjustment, Mr. Cole?
Yes, uh, the town council can override the manual.
Well, and the, and we set the salary for the town manager regardless, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what, um, so instead of the, the acting pay section stating shall receive compensation in an annualized, annualized amount of X dollars, can you give us some language to change that to affix ten percent over their existing compensation?
I would suggest that it read, um, in that section two, uh, in addition to their regular compensation, the police chief and the director of Parks and Community Partnership shall each receive, uh, ten percent of their regular compensation as acting pay, period. Such acting pay shall be retroactive to June twelfth.
And I don't read anything about, uh, front row parking in the parking lot.
And front row parking in the parking lot.
So does this change the salary or is this pay while they're acting?
This is ten percent above their current salary.
Salary, right.
While they're acting, which which very well may come to an end tonight based on the agenda. Actually, the next item. So are we good with, with that? Did you capture what he indicated, indicated, or are we just going to say as modified and then we will receive an updated page number? Well, it's the first page of the resolution from Mr. Cole.
Yeah, we can just get that updated from Mr. Cole.
Okay.
Everybody in agreement with that? This is just a directional kind of thing?
No, we're going to approve the resolution. We're modifying section two of the acting pay to change the compensation of, of ten to ten percent above their current salaries.
Okay.
And.
That changes the employee manual.
Just, just this time, it overrides it. In the employee manual, we will be getting to review when, Mr. Cole?
Ooh, I somewhat defer to your other staff, but I think it's
He's having a great time tonight.
Really up to, uh, we've got it done on our end.
Okay.
So.
So.
It's whenever it can be scheduled for council meeting.
It could be set to us to review without, in a meeting, can it? We just can't make a decision on it.
That's correct.
So if it's, if the town has completed its work on it and Mr. Cole has completed its work, can somebody blind copy the council and say, this is what we're proposing that you adopt at a future council meeting?
It'd make for a lot better educated dialogue when the meeting happened, that's for sure, right? I would hope.
Yes, we can do that.
Great. Okay, so then based on this resolution with the modifications and the percentages temporarily overriding the employee manual, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve resolution number four zero two zero two four, a resolution authorizing acting pay for co-acting town managers and it, uh, and, and modification of section two of the resolution to reflect the addition of ten percent of their regular, of their regular compensation as acting pay retroactive to June twelfth and the change to be made to the employee manual for this situation only.
Overriding the, overriding it in this situation only. Yeah, we're not changing the manual. We're overriding it. There you go. I would second that.
You have a motion in a second, Ms. Erickson.
But no, repeat it.
Yes, sorry. Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes, yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes. That motion passes six to zero. Um, do you, do we require a pan to be filled out and signed by? Or is this count? Does this count as a pan?
We, we can do the pan.
Right.
The two signature goes on it.
We can put yours on it.
And we can refer back to the resolution.
You can sign it.
I shouldn't have mentioned that. Okay, all right, just let me know.
I, I would like to publicly thank Patrick and Madeline again for stepping up uh and taking on this extra duty.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
Matter of fact, I think uh we should applaud.
Madeline's got two pluses for tonight.
Yes.
Right, the five minutes, the five minute, five hundred thousand dollar speech.
Right.
Right?
All right, well, um, next up is resolution forty seven twenty twenty four. This is the appointing of the interim town manager. Mr. Cole?
I think as everyone is aware, um. Your former town manager, uh, Mike Foreman, Mr. Foreman, uh, separated from employment with the town on uh July thirty first. So um, you're in need of defining your direction going forward. It's typical to appoint. Um, one or more interim managers at this point. Or before you had acting managers. Um, this resolution proposes uh the appointment of an interim manager. Uh, does not uh designate who that would be. Uh, it also uh. Uh, contemplates uh setting a annual salary of the interim manager for this period they would be in the position. Again, it does not uh specify that, that salary. Uh, it's really up to council to decide what you want to do in this circumstance.
Okay, well, everybody has been given access to the uh salary survey information that. Has been out there regarding, you know, related to um Colorado municipalities. I hope you've all had an opportunity to review them. Uh, again, thank you to Madeline and to Patrick for stepping up. I, I don't know that we need to, to go forward um during this interim process. Unless there's somebody else in the room that wants to be also. Co-interim, interrimming, acting, acting sounds so much better than interiming. Anyway, um, I, I, it's, I think we should uh appoint Madeline to the interim role. That's just me, any?
I second.
Oh, hey, it's not a motion.
No, no, there wasn't, I know that.
Can I speak?
Yeah, by all means. So love to hear from the staff.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for this opportunity, but most of you know that my dream was to come here and be a police chief. And I'm really looking forward to getting back to that. And I would say over the last two months working with Madeline, she's more than capable of doing this job, so. I think it's a great decision, um, but I want you to know that. I'm not bowing out or shirking from any responsibilities, but I do have a goal too, and I'd like to get back to, to doing just police work again.
Appreciate those.
And we think you're good at it, so there you go.
But, Mr. Tarnish?
Yes, I, I'd just like to say a few words. Um, past couple of months, you know, I've had to work with Madeline daily on multiple things. And uh, you know, her experience and expertise in a lot of areas has, has really come in handy. And it's really been a stark change from where we were to how we're getting things done now. So I think appointing her as an interim is a, is a very successful move and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. I would say just from the outside looking in, because I don't see the daily operations here, but um. My experience with Madeline is uh she grew up here, she cares about this place, um, and it shows. Um, and she's definitely wants the best for the town, which is what we really need more than anything.
Before she starts to cry and we get to her phone?
Wait, hang on, we have one more thing. And, and she, she does, and she does have the ability to. Command an audience that earns the town a hundred thousand dollars per minute she speaks.
Yes.
Which I don't know that we've ever gotten that from anybody else prior.
And she got that, she got the head nod from Nepo too.
I was going to say, and then we had outside agency representation speaking well of her. But Madeline, what, what do you think about taking on this role?
Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence for everyone. That's, um, I definitely wasn't expecting to hear all of that tonight, so I appreciate that. Um, I've, I've enjoyed the last couple of, of months. Um, it is what I went to graduate school for. Um, and I do care a lot about our town and our employees and, and really the future of Monument, so I'd be honored to continue in this role.
Okay, so then it looks like the uh section two would be filled in by Madeline's name. Um, now we just have to figure out what do we pay her? So for those of you who went through, I'd love to hear the numbers you've come up with.
I, I, after looking at those, I came up uh somewhere in the one seventy to one eighty range.
Okay, that's a good range.
I mean, I, I, yeah, I always want to get feedback from my fellow council people. I mean, that's just kind of, that's kind of where my brain landed after looking at all that and, yeah.
After applying the military discount that we should.
What about the police discount?
First responder, right?
Yeah. Well, I, I just, I just want to, first, I just want to get assurances from the police chief that. You know, now that he's going to start hearing numbers that we don't get cited tickets when we, when we leave the driving on the roads or anything like that.
You're not going to be able to offend me with numbers today.
I, I, I'm good with the one seventy five.
All right, so we have one seventy five. Which is in the middle. Is there anybody else in agreement with that number?
I'm good with that number, obviously.
I'm good with that number.
Yeah.
Okay, so then section three would read one seventy five as interim town manager.
Well, probably should ask Madeline, she's a.
Oh, well, Madeline, are you okay with that?
A hundred and seventy five dollars a month, actually.
Hundred percent, hundred seventy five dollars, not, all right.
Yes, I, that would be acceptable to me.
All right, well, who wants to do the honors of uh? Making the motion for that resolution?
I will make a motion to accept resolution number four seven two zero two four, appointing the interim town manager. Uh, section number two, appointment of Madeline Van den Hook. And section three, at an annual salary of one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars annually.
We have a motion.
Say it.
We have a second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
And, and, and Chief Freego can go back to being Chief Freego.
And we do, we do expect that you're going to go for the full blown town manager job when. When such time comes, correct? Or you need some time to think about that one?
Um, I, it will be a really great opportunity for me to um test drive this for a little while and. Perhaps see what November holds too.
Right.
Okay, um, next up, well, again, cannot wait. Um, looking forward to completely upending everything.
What, what, where are we at and maybe talk about it another time or even in executive session, but like. With replacing the finance director with having our HR in good shape and things like that. I mean, where, where are we going with that?
You can add those as discussion items if you'd like.
I think we should.
Okay, so when we get to council comments or council authorization items, remember to do that for both.
Okay, for the next meeting?
For, for, yeah, we, yeah, okay, right, next meeting. Um, because we're going to move on to lodging tax. Um, Mr. Murray?
Yes, let me get it pulled up on presentation here. All right. So the town of Monument is proposing a five percent lodging tax on hotels, short-term rentals and third parties and truck stops. Um, the estimated annual revenue will be right around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Some ideas for this revenue, um, after meeting with Madeline to talk about upgrading some ADA compliances. Um, are looking at upgrading our parks. The playground equipment is right around two hundred thousand and resurfacing the playgrounds is a hundred thousand. This makes them all ADA compliance with the equipment and surfaces. Our top three recommendations are toddler climbing areas at Limbok Park. New equipment at the heart of Monument Park or adding equipment to Dirty Woman Creek Park. In addition, receiving lodging tax will also be really good leverage um for applying for grant funding in parks. Deckard Technology is a software that the town will partner with. Um, if we decide to go with them. Um, their primary use is to identify and locate where the short-term rentals are. Um, in that bottom right illustration, you can see it have BRBO, Airbnb. This um software searches all of those platforms. Anytime there's a listing or hit. It'll pull it directly to this website so we can see when um a new listing is posted. It'll also allow for the town to enforce and the compliance of the new short-term rental lodging tax program. Um, the tax collected through this software of Deckard can integrate with GOV OS, the self-collection software that we're using now. Um, they will also reach out to all short-term rentals to get them under compliance for us as part of their setup. They have real-time notifications. That was part of what I talked about, so we know when someone comes in or starts to list. And then they have a short inflammation time, implementation time. Um, that graph in the bottom left there, it shows about a one-month time for them to come in to integrate with the town and set up. Um, and then it gives real-time graphs and statistics on how the businesses are doing, what the average is charging and things like that. Um, Deckard's pricing is pretty reasonable. Um, I'd be recommending the six thousand dollar price point, and this includes the outreach, outreach campaign where they will send letters to all the short-term rentals. Um, for their compliance and the procedures, and this also encompasses all the. Identification, the compliance of the estimated eighty-three properties that we have right now, that Deckard identified. Um, this pricing will stay the same until we get to a hundred and fifteen listings. At that time, the annual price would go up to five thousand from thirty-five hundred.
Are you determined that the short-term rentals for your estimated revenue stream based off of this software program already? Is that? Is that where you came up with that?
The two hundred and twenty thousand, we got that from Sophia, um, our sales tax consultant and working with her to get the, that five percent, two hundred thousand dollar number.
Right, but how did you determine the short-term rental number?
Um, the eighty-three number, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, you said eighty-three short-term rentals.
Yes, and that's through, so Deckard, they pulled up the town of Monument and they went to all the, they pulled all the listings through VRBO, Airbnb. Um, and they could see that in the town line is their eighty-three right now.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a little more in-depth than that too. It uses artificial intelligence to scour the internet and looks at the addresses within a specific. SIC code within the town, and they can tell on a daily basis for compliance purposes if. Someone decides to throw their, their house up for rent for the, you know, USAF graduation. And they're not licensed in the town, this will pick it up and we can send them a note saying. Yeah, you, you can rent your place out, but you need to be licensed to do it because you're operating as a business.
Gotcha.
Actually, pretty cool.
Any additional questions?
No, I have none.
So you obviously got more data. Sorry, I missed part of the presentation, but you got more data from Deckard and um. The only, the only thing that I would be curious is how do we do compliance with the, the truck stops? We're going to have to go out and, obviously.
There'll be individual audits um for the truck stops and just knowing where each one of their parking spots that they're charging for are.
Okay.
Does that include the quick trip?
Quick trip is going to, we'll take that on as another discussion item, because that is obviously not. They're not following their PUD.
Well, I, hey, I. I, I heard the chief of police is in the office in the room.
Well, if they're not going to follow it, we should probably make them charge for the spots, right? Uh, it's a much longer conversation, but I'm willing to have it another time. But uh, just a little teaser. Um, no, we're, we're well aware of the QT and their PUD and what they should and shouldn't be doing. Um, in fact, I've had some conversations about potentially just approaching them to approach the council to change their PUD. If that's something you have an appetite for, but if you look at the property, it's designed to have people stay there.
Right.
So we're in a weird. Position in that it's not allowed, but they have all this property. So I'm just thinking, let's make it legal and come to you and see if we can get that changed, and then we could. Account for all the parking spots and the fees and all that, and then get our take from it. I agree with that.
Okay. Uh, any other questions on the lodging tax? All right, thank you, Mr. Murray.
Except where we, okay, so what's the next step?
We need to bring, the next step is we need to bring back the lodging tax um resolution or ordinance in order to get it on the ballot. Um, so we've, did we, we have to agree to a percent? Which he brought up, right?
And where it's going, yeah.
And where it's going to. And I think Mr. Pierito would probably want to have some say, so.
My understanding, my, my understanding of five percent is right in the middle of where all the other.
Yeah.
Taxes worth, like from around the different areas. So yeah, what's the timeline that we, that we have? What's the cutoff to get it on the ballot? September?
Soon, like this next meeting, next meeting.
So. And I think we're ready other than this information to add to what Mr. Cole's worked on with Sophia.
Okay. All right, so let's make sure on the next meeting we have that, we can have the discussion on what's going to get filled in on the blanks. Um, as far as its use percentage, I think we're all in agreement with. Now we can get it on the ballot. Right? Um, next up is SROs for D thirty-eight. Mr. Kimpel, this one's yours.
I just want to uh. I want to see that the. Town, the, the council staff that we're all, I, I think we're, we're all in agreement. Along with the communities that we want to see um. The best for our schools and protection of our. Students, teachers, staff and their safety. And I understand I'm all for uh Monument Academy having the SROs. Um, what I would like to see, because I think some, I think there's a misunderstanding is that. There is in fact money that comes, that goes from or comes from D thirty-eight and goes to Monument Academy. They, they do, it happens. So in essence, it's tax dollars. That are going to Monument Academy that they have SROs when we have other schools in D thirty-eight. That have a larger population that I think needs to be, I, I, I just want to see that we're exhausting every avenue by trying to communicate or invite. The D thirty-eight um members. To come here and participate and talk about what, what's the, what's the path forward, what's the way forward? How do we get to having SROs in the schools every day instead of? What they're doing right now is they're, they're, they have one that's kind of rotating around from the El Paso, it's from the sheriff's office. It's El Paso County Sheriff's Office, so they, they're not there every day. They're there kind of rotating around and as best they can. Um, I, I, I just think that we need to do our due diligence by exhausting all means to uh. Attempt to. Come to agreements with D thirty-eight. Come to agreements with D thirty-eight on how to, what's the way forward? What's the ultimate, what's the ultimate goal, long-term, short-term? Best business practice to get those SROs every day in the schools and D, in all, all D thirty-eight schools.
And who do you think is best to have that conversation?
I, I think potentially either representative from the D thirty-eight board or the superintendent. Herself.
Right.
To have a, to come and talk to council and or the, the, uh, town manager.
Right. So I'll just give you my perspective because we've never gone out soliciting SO services. It's people have come to us.
Yeah.
And we walk a, a tight rope with that being in the county. And that the sheriff is handling that. So in my position, I don't feel comfortable going and trying to take those services. Uh, not to disagree with what you're saying. I, I think if it was up to me, we'd have a cop in every school all the time.
Yeah.
But that's my hesitation in that those schools aren't in the town. And they're being handled by the sheriff. I don't really want to go knocking on the door and saying, hey, I want to take this away. Um, I guess it would have to be a nuanced conversation and perhaps one above my pay grade as well.
Yeah.
Um, but don't disagree with anything you said.
What could also be is like. El Paso County covers certain days and they come to agreement. D thirty-eight comes to agreement with the town saying that, okay, and this would get extra police on the force to cover those other days. We're not, I'm not trying to cut out El Paso County Sheriff at all. I'm just trying to exhaust all potential. Showing, you know, reflecting and showing that we're trying to do our due diligence by protecting, um. Again, our community. You know. God forbid, anything happens, but I just, I just. I understand the agreement with Monument Academy because they pursued it. They came to us. But there's also tax dollars in there. That from D thirty-eight, from the community, from D thirty, in D thirty-eight that's going to that. And Monument Academy is also, that's, that's a charter school that people are paying for their kids to go to as well.
They don't pay to go to school.
They're paying services.
Yeah, but they're not paying tuition.
Yeah, but they're, they're paying services. So I. But that's where, that's where I'm driving at is that, and we have bigger schools with more, the middle school, the only middle school and the two high schools. Have a larger population than the academy or the high school that's now operational as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, there's probably a conversation to be had, um, like, like I said, above me.
Yeah.
Because from my point of view, you know, Monument Academy came to me, we have an agreement. I don't necessarily look at where the dollars come from, but I'm totally hearing what you're saying. Um, but we'll never shut anyone away, we'll push anyone away, we're, we'll listen to anything. I just don't want to be the instigator of a conversation. Um, that would kind of circumvent the county and what they're trying to do.
And I could be wrong on this, but I thought that there was a conversation at one point in time, years back.
Uh, if there was, I, I'm not privy to it and.
I think it was before your time that you, that, that you came here. I'm, I'm not, I'm not even sure that's just something that I heard, but I, that's why I'm trying to. Find out, research and find out.
Understood.
And I'm not sure how the other council members feel about it, but I just.
I also hear you. I think it's a D thirty-eight. Um, decision. Um, and I, I imagine they're probably discussing that. I don't know that for sure, even though I have an inside scoop. I don't really, I don't really, um, I don't really know if they are, but I assume that they, they are and, um. That's, you know. But I, but yeah, I mean, we want kids to be safe for sure. It, they're their own government. I can put in a word for you.
I hear your concerns. Can I have two kids in high school and it doesn't, it always crosses my mind, the safety there. And so I just between LP and Palmer Lake or Palmer, sorry, Palmer Ridge. The enemy, it, they're huge schools. I mean, would one be enough? Like, I guess those are conversations that we should have with the district. So I, I kind of agree with you. At least bring it up and say that we're concerned. So we spread the, the evenness.
Uh, you know, at least bring it up and, and ask questions as to what is your, what's your, what's your goal? What is the, you know, are you looking into this? Is there something that we can do to help? You know, just probing questions, I think would be at a minimum to ask. Cause we should have that relationship regardless. We should have a, we should have a dialogue between the D thirty-eight school board and us. Although we're in different swim lanes, I get it.
I don't know that I agree. It's, it's a government aid, it's a government entity outside the town limits for the most part. And if they want to come to us because they want to partner, I am, I am fine with us all being open, open-minded about it. But I don't think we should be pursuing that.
But do they also, I mean, I'm, so this, this new term, it's, you know, instead of this thinking outside about it, it's thinking in the box. Thinking in the box is saying. Cause they have new, they have new members too, right? Some have been on there for a while, but some are new. Before, we've had Doc Summers here on a couple of occasions, giving us briefs and updates on some things that are taking place. Um, and that's kind of fallen by the wayside where. Do we welcome them to come in and, and, and just have a dialogue instead of? Well, I wonder what they're thinking or I wonder if they would be maybe up to this, you know? And it's, it's just initiating that convert, you know, this, this dialogue to have with them to see what their future vision and plans are.
For policing?
Um, just in general.
Fine, in general.
Yeah, for like, for security matters, because a population is growing with the development. There's potential new schools coming online. Right? There are schools that are in this district that back in the day, they were state of the art, they were great, they're open campuses. But now in today's threat environment, they are severely lacking in security measures, which. You know, I've subbed in many of them. I, I don't, I had foster kids in some of them for a period of time. It, it, no, and I've, and I've been to the schools and I've seen it and I'm just. I asked when I was there, I've either asked the principal, I've asked the vice principal, I've asked other teachers. You know, how do you feel about this or what's going on or what do you know? And, you know, they tell me they're what they know, but I think it's something that we should all just know. Um, it would be, it'd be good to have.
It's an interesting position and I think we're both in it. So you're a representative for a lot of these kids. And they do live in the town and they go to schools there, just like we police them when they're at home. So that's something we grapple with all the time is, you know, like you said, what's my swim lane? What, what can I do? You know, one of the reasons we have officers in the school is to build those relationships for when they are at home. And then maybe we have to go deal with them there, but the district or, you know, even the town boundaries, just it make it a very unique situation. And then of course, there's parents on the board and the kids in schools. And maybe that's a good way to approach it as a parent. And how do you approach a school board as a parent? I don't know. But it's, it's interesting and it's something we grapple with, not just with SROs. I mean, it's daily in police work to say, okay, you're across the street, it's not ours, but since you're on this side of the street, it is.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, it just struck me a little bit to think about how you're in the exact same position because you're representing those people as well.
So what would you, what's the action item you want to take from this? Do you want to, do you want us to reach out to the superintendent? I mean, I can reach out to, to my co.
Yeah.
And, and ask if we can get, uh, meetings scheduled with the super and their board and come here. We can have an open discussion about whatever you want.
Just generalities, yeah. I, I would appreciate that, just to see what's. And then it, it helped to me, it helps bring awareness, because a lot of people don't go to the D thirty-eight school board meetings. You know, and a lot of people don't come here to these meetings, but if we have both parties in here. It's, it could be shared information of what's, what's available, what to offer and what the thought process is.
Yeah, there's other things we can do too, because school starting and like to show goodwill with sports when they start with the games and. Get the council involved in that. So I will reach out to.
You're just.
Search and.
You're kind of waiting for Whataburger night, sponsor night.
What? I'm done. I'm full up.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I mean, that's the other thing too, is the school is, uh, the fourth, August fourteenth is when the kids are back in, back in session. So, um, that's going to be increased volume of traffic everywhere and kids walking on the sidewalks or in the streets and driving and. Uh, buses and the loading and unloading of the kids. Um, that's, that's other, that's something else to bring up to the community is just thought process of. Slow down, schools in session. Be careful.
Hey, I will, and I'll report back to council on. Getting together with them.
Well, they're, they're having a retreat tomorrow and you can see online here, so.
They're here?
Yeah.
Oh. Um. Okay, then next up is, um, Mr. Romanello.
I, um, I guess this guy put on here, but I mean, after our conversation last time, I was looking for, um, some solutions that we could all. You know, come to agreement on, and it doesn't seem that having at least one of the traditional old staff people. Uh, back on there, but we do need a conduit, maybe as Mayor Pro Tim King said, like through HR or something in the future that. Gets these checks and balances back, but I, I'm not seeing or feeling the support from staff or anybody else on having. One of those traditional positions that used to report to us be back on. So I don't know where we're going with this or what there is to talk about.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I don't know what to tell you about that.
Wasn't expecting anything. So go on to the next one.
All right, next, for, uh, Mayor Pro Tim King.
Well, it's, it's simple. We discussed it a little bit last time. We'd just like to expand the area for the residency for the town manager position to all of Monument and eight oh one three two.
I think we're pretty much all in favor of putting that out there, right?
I'm in, I'm in favor, I am. And is everybody else have a head nod so we can give direction? So the direction to staff and Mr. Cole would be to get on the ballot for this November. Um. Revising the town charter to reflect that the residency requirement for the town managers to be within the town limits. And expanded to the eight oh one three two zip code as it was prior to the town charter.
Well, it was just eight oh one three two before.
Oh, right.
But, um, and, and Mr. Cole, there's, there, there's two specific parts to this. Because there's a little bit of monument that is not in eight oh one three two. So that's why it would be the entire town boundaries plus eight oh one three two.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll work on that and run that language by you before the next meeting, if I could, please.
Okay.
All right, next up, public comment or items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in town hall that would like to make a public comment? This, Janet Lewandowski.
Not Lewandowski, but.
Come on down.
Like to talk a little bit about compensation for the council. So it was on the whole world charter commission, and I think it would be helpful to know why we ended up not putting anything in there. So that it deferred to state statute. We spent countless hours on discussing this matter. And a big part of it was, I think, felt that there should be some compensation. Because not having a compensation might keep some people who would have expenses for attending meetings such as childcare. Or needing to pay somebody to take care of someone in the household that would need, that needs constant care, just as examples. Um, might keep those kinds of people from even considering ever running. Because it had, would, could, would occur these extra costs, but we could not figure out how to do it. We, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out, we want something fair. But we don't want something to get out of control so that people were running for office because of the pay that they would receive. So that's why I got turned back state statute and back to you. But I think some of the feeling we had is that a good council would be able to come up with something that would help. With extra expenses, a little bit of compensation, but with something in there that would keep it from getting out of control. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in town hall that would like to make a public comment?
I'm sure if this is the right place. This is needing to make a comment, um. A little over twenty-four hours ago, uh. Town received a request from a neighboring water district to open the emergency interconnects. You were well familiar. Um, as in contact, we, we mad about that and we gather our warriors go ahead and, uh. Move forward based on the IGA that the council approved, uh, late last year. And, uh, happy to say that it lasted for about twenty, almost twenty-four hours. But they were able to restore their well and the center shut off the, uh, the emergency tie. But, uh, I know that that district was very thankful that they, they have that interconnection kept them. And water for about, for about one or two hours. Total amount of water they used was, was actually a lot lower than the normal use. I don't have a final numbers, but. Amount of water they used, uh, came in handy in that short period of time. So I just want you to know that we had several emergency interconnects, uh, this is the first time it, it actually got, got used. Now, request several months ago from, uh, towards makers. But again, they solved their issue before that connection could be made. Um, so this is the first active use of town water they're going to do, it's going to be based on the IGA that the council approved.
What, what, just a question?
Uh, Pioneer Lookout Water District is the area. Uh, the west side of Monument and, and it goes about. Where the sorcerers are, you know, five, it's about forty-four home subdivision. Um, about a lot of people, roughly, that was one of the interconnects that put in. Um, south from that, probably public, that reports, uh, gardeners who centers, that's where the vault is. I just wanted to thought you'd be, want to be informed of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Will?
No hands raised, man. One in person did raise their hand.
Okay, Portia.
Hi, good evening, Mayor LeKind and council members. Um, I am at home or I would be there in person. I am very sick. Um, but. Um, I just wanted to, uh, publicly say thank you as an employee to, to Freegan and to Madeline. For their leadership and their direction the past couple of months. Um, the kindness and the compassion that they led with, um, was admirable. And I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate it. And, um, I'm looking forward to Madeline being our interim, whether it's for now or forever. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing her thrive in that position. So that's all.
Thank you, Portia.
Thank you, Portia.
Thank you.
Feel better?
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none. Any council authorization items?
Uh, just to talk about finance director, HR and, uh, getting our staff where it should be, as I discussed.
All right, so, um, finance director slash. HR, okay, so make those discussion items for next meeting.
Also town manager.
Can we just let her get her feet wet before we start working? The permanent town manager?
Yeah.
Okay. We, we can discuss it. There's going to need to be a job description written. We need to bring on a, uh, an agency to help look. Could also like to see what happens in November with the ballot initiative. That expands the scope. I would prefer not to limit ourselves until we see what the voters say. That we can discuss it.
Yeah, we should, we should start the discussions instead of. Table it, but then, uh, in addition to that, um. About the authorization items. Do we also need to discuss, um, or have it an action item about the? Do we also need to discuss um or have it an action item about the? Um. Appraisals and I and I know I sent something to Bob. Um, a question, but also. If the chief and Madeline were. Had a performance appraisal. In. Another position and then they were. Promoted up to town acting town manager, should their. Previous appraisal be closed out, a new one be written for their acting town manager? To keep everything legal and above water, so nothing goes wrong, nothing happens, but that's how. I know in my world that that's how we have to do it, so that's why I was thinking about it. Um. To make sure that we, to make sure that we get appraisals. Written down and and completed, so there isn't any lapse. With it. Because because you can't rate them on their. All the pre, I'm going to say all the appraisals, but. Your previously written appraisals because you were doing new duties and responsibilities. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what what um? What did Mr. Cole say?
I I just sent it to him before I before I came walking in, I sent I sent him and uh I I. In the mix of all the things I was doing today down at my job, I sat down and I wrote up. A town manager appraisal with. Performance elements just to throw out there saying, how does this? And it's just kind of like a big, big picture, big broad, big brush stroke. And I could send it out to whoever else that needs to see it as and I just. I just whipped something up together.
I'm gonna send it out. Yeah, we're working with a. With an art to do an RFP for.
Yeah.
The HR company that's going to do all those things.
Yeah.
So.
And we we did put together performance evaluations based on criteria as a council.
Yep.
For the town manager. Did you use that as a business?
I did not. I stayed away from it just because of the.
Well.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, let's wait till Mr. Cold has a chance to respond and then we can get that out.
So the other thing, the HR company, are we going to look at several? How are we going to vet?
Because of the cost and it's a contract, it will go out to RFP.
Okay.
There's three, we need to, we need to send it to three. We've, do we have the third?
Staff hasn't actually seen any of this yet, so we're waiting to see.
We will make sure that you have everything.
Oh.
By the end of the, by the end of the week, you will have the other, the first two. There was a third. You'll have the first three and then um the set of criteria for it, we can work collab, we can collaborate. And also member chronic can work with with you on it and.
Did you guys find the HR?
Yeah. Yes.
You guys did, okay.
Because of the problems that were being caused by. HR.
So to, okay, really quickly to circle back, they, are we going to see the employee handbook as well?
Yeah, that will get sent to all of us.
Okay, and then they're gonna, I'm assuming we get to question these companies about what services they provide.
They can provide present, they can do presentations. They can come in and do presentations. They're they're local or we can have them online.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the criteria that what they can do should be reviewed with. Madeline and um E- Emily. Emily, to ensure that they're meeting. Out the criteria that they would need for regular for town staff and that they can be our criteria. For evaluating the town manager, the performance, the three sixty performance reviews. The employee engagement surveys so that the council has an understanding of. What the staff uh. Similar to what you probably go through in with your employer.
And that's fine, but are they going to also bring um? And if something like this already exists, what levels that and what pay raise, pay scale for each level? Would that we're currently using? Do we have something like that already? We have some positions that have salary ranges, but we do need to do a full on compensation study and analysis, so we would like that from us.
And all of these companies do that.
Mm hmm. Okay, but we don't have something solid that covers every position, not currently, no. Okay, we we don't have, we we have things that there, that there may be not updated. We we just need a full analysis. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other items?
Yeah, I'd like to just bring up the.
Are we done with council authorization items or are you moving on to council comments?
No, it's authorization.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish up.
Yeah, do we uh for authorization items, do we have, do we already have a list? Of. Discussion items that we need to or authorization items that we need to have to uh for next meeting to go to make sure it goes on the gets on the ballot? And do we need to add anything else to it? That we're not, that we don't forget about it, overlook, so we miss out on the opportunity?
But I believe we have everything that we know that we need to bring that based on tonight's conversation and previous council meetings.
Fair.
Should be three items, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
There we go.
Um. Last for the uh authorization items, just something to. Um. Something I I I would recommend to heavily consider. I know that there was a discussion about a council member retreat. Coming up.
Yep, and there's dates that have been.
Dates that there. And I'm just. Best business practice. Is that the smartest thing to do a couple of months before an election where the seats might change, whereas if you defer it until after the election where you might have new members on board? To have a retreat then vice. Now before, and the same thing with the council member photos that are scheduled for September, instead of paying twice. In case you have new people on the board, wait until after the election is over. And also, and lastly is with this election coming up, because I know there's going to be like mandatory training. Face to face with the. Planning Commission, do we lock in? Do we start to look in locking in dates now, so it's already in? The schedule instead of trying to figure it out at the eleventh hour and next thing you know, it's pushed, it's pushed a year. Just trying to get ahead of the, just recommending getting ahead of the power curve and planning for it now before, then it can be put into the agendas. After the election, so you don't sit there and go, well, we have too many, we have too many other things going on right now. Because no matter what, after the election, whoever's sitting up here, they need to be briefed on. Legalities and train properly before they start executing and making decisions.
There, there's no training that would allow for that to happen in in time. That they they will swear in like we all do.
Yeah.
And then training will get scheduled and they'll be making decisions before that happens.
Well, but I'm asking is like, do you, do we look at now? Do we have staff look at now? Having some of those people come down. To give that training instead of waiting to hear when the training is available, do we reach out? Do we be proactive and say, hey? These, this, this date might work in the beginning of December. This date might work in January, you know, instead of going, well, we're waiting to hear when they're going to hold this. You know, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for proactiveness. It's all, that's what I'm looking for instead of because, you know, I really thought about this retreat stuff. And I'm like.
I'm I'm going to disagree on the retreat because there are things that we need to get scheduled. Regardless of who is sitting. Here. That is the strategic plan and we have a third party that is going to be presenting, and so we're having to base some of it on that person's schedule. So, you know, three of us at the very least will be here. Going forward, and why wouldn't you want your input? Between now and the end of the year. At a retreat related to strategic planning, wouldn't you want to have some say?
I I would like to have some say. But I think I can also give my input. At a meeting like we're sitting at right now. I don't have, I don't have to go to a retreat to have that discussion. I can do it at a council board right now between now and the election.
Well, my my view, excuse me, my view of the retreat was. And I really liked the approach. It was about healing. We've been through a turbulent time. It's been very difficult on everybody. And we put in incredible amount of time. Let's have a little healing. Let's do something to. Turn the title, turn, you know, turn the page of the book and and make it. More positive than it's been of late. And that was what I thought was the kind of the the backbone of the retreat concept. And I'm all for it. I just, I think it's needed. I think it's needed for staff. I think it's needed for council. Um. My too.
It's on, it's not a bad idea, I think, in terms of um spending. Funds, maybe we have funds set aside for it. I could see your point, Ken, and like we are getting new people. Why would we not include them? Um, is this going to be like a an annual thing like?
We do, we do usually two retreats a year.
Oh, okay, I was not aware of that. Do we have numbers on how much that costs?
We could go back and look at what those numbers cost. I mean, depends on whether we take, do them locally or if we, like last one we did was Westminster. Um, I think we may have done on locally at Flying Horse.
Yeah.
Uh, was was a day retreat. Um, yeah, there's costs, it's baked into our budget.
Paris.
And what?
That's not Paris.
I guess, did you, what was the end result out of those that there was?
Well, one of the retreats was the kickoff of getting us the home rule. In fact, we spent a whole afternoon on. But this, Miss Hogan was there and our previous attorney was there. I mean, we spent an awful lot of time on understanding. How long it took to go through. The home rule process, right? The election of the Home Rule Charter Commission, all those things, the dates, the timelines. I'm not doing that at the DAS. It's too long and it. There's no reason that we couldn't spend it on a Saturday or Sunday. You know, get away from the normal business and go down that path of learning about something new like that. So that's just, that's my two cents on it. I I got a lot from it.
Let's do the retreat.
Yep.
And so with us moving forward with. Um, the audio visual, I'm also working on moving forward with the civic clerk. Um, the next step with that is getting council. Going with their board portals. Um, I have an hour. That we can use a civic clerk. Um, and they will do a training. They'll also do a video recording of the training. So I'm just asking if there's, I've got a few, I've got four dates in mind. That this will work with the. The trainer with civic clerk. Um. And I've got a few different times. And I know that it's hard for everybody to attend at once, but maybe if I could get two or three council members that could join that training. Um. And then we can get rolling with the board portal.
Something could be, that could be done during the, it's an hour, you said? Is that something that could be done during the retreat that we had? Looked at for those dates?
Um, I would have to look at the times compared to the retreat dates and times. Um, the dates that he proposed that work with his schedules. I've got September fifth. September twenty third, September twenty fourth and September twenty sixth. Um, I could always reach out and see if there's other times and days that he would be available, but that was just what he had at the time.
So September twenty third, twenty fourth and what?
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
Twenty six and the fifth.
Right.
So on the fifth, he's got an eleven thirty block. The twenty third, he's got a ten o'clock. Um, the twenty fourth, it's eleven thirty, twelve and twelve thirty. And then the twenty sixth, it's eleven thirty, and I can send all this out in an email so you guys can all look at your schedules and. Let me know what works and what doesn't, and if we have to, I will send it back for. Figuring.
So it's for an hour in any of those dates?
Mm hmm. And it'll also be a recorded video, so. Whoever can't attend, I can still send out the video for. Everybody to view, but it'll basically be. How you guys will operate your voting. Um, he'll show you how you can view your agendas, your packets. Um, you guys can make notes and all sorts of different cool things with it, so I'm excited to get going with it.
Okay.
And is there one thing, I I don't know if it's, I haven't looked recently on the. Town of Monument website where it has all our names and what term we're in. Does it have the district that we're in? In there as well, and if not, can that be put in? So for the residents to know. With the upcoming election.
Okay, so you're talking election.
Yeah, but no, on the, on the town website, it has all our names with our email addresses. And then the what term we're filling, does it have the district that we're filling? And if not, if not, can that be put on there?
If I could jump in in uh, so again, all of you are. Elected currently to at large seats, right? So it would be misleading to identify. Districts with any of you at this point.
Oh, no, I'm talking about after the election.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other council authors? You had something, Mr. Kane?
Yeah. So I'd like to start having the conversation on modifying the code that's reflecting previous surfaces since we went to the Air Force Academy and. Realized uh the issues that they're having down there because. Currently, we have a lot of coverage, but it doesn't talk about impervious surface and we have projects that have a hundred percent or close. To impervious, previous surfaces and we. And we don't have proper uh detention facilities. Obviously, because it's impacting the Air Force Academy, so I think we need to change that.
Sorry.
Do you want to do those um? Do you want those in discussion items or do you want to start off having conversations with Tom and? Dan and Madeline?
If you could put it on for a discussion item, I'll have a conversation with them ahead of that.
Okay. Um. Cool. Yeah, if you haven't had a chance to do the immersion tour at the USAF, it's pretty, it's pretty great. But. Let it be known that um. They are going to let you know that Monument's not helping out the water situation.
Yeah, and we need to fix that.
What meeting do we want that added to for a discussion item?
It's in February September.
Any anytime you want to add it, I'll take care of, I'll take care of getting Dan up to speed. In the next few days.
Think September?
I know.
Be best?
Huh?
Do we think September would be best or?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Do we have? Do we have, are they fill, is things filling up? For September? Let us, let it, let us know so the meeting doesn't get out of control. Click, click, click.
So either the third or sixteenth is.
Yes, yeah, as soon as you want to do it, it's fine with me.
If we could do the sixteenth, that would be best.
Okay.
Okay.
September fifteenth. Sixteenth. September eighteenth. All right, any council comments? All right, um. I call for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Are adjourned?